Okay. Good evening, council members, and good evening, Altadena. The October 17, 2017, meeting of the Altadena Town Council is hereby called to order. The time is 7:07. I will turn the mic over to Councilmember Malone to introduce the group that will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
This evening, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by the Altadena 4-H Club, and leading that is going to be Heather. If Heather could come to the podium, and if she'd like to say something about the 4-H, and then lead us into the pledge.
Hello, I'm Heather from the Altadena, local Altadena 4-H Club that meets in the library once a month, every first Tuesday, I believe, second Tuesday of every month. And I'll be leading you guys in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could all please stand up for that. Right, hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may now sit down.
Thank you so much, 4-H. We always appreciate you coming to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You took the time out of your wonderful schedule. You could have been doing something else, but we appreciate you being here. So let's give them another round of applause. Okay, roll call. Recording Secretary, Councilmember Matthews.
Good evening, everyone. Council, please acknowledge your presence when your name is called. Nestor Delatorre.
Present.
Okori Ezimi.
Present.
Veronica Jones.
Here.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Jennifer Lee.
Excused.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Markison.
Excuse absence.
Judy Matthews, present. Justin Robinson, glorious, Justin Robinson.
He's excused.
Gloria Seneca.
Present.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Sylvia Vega.
Present.
John White.
Present.
Dr. Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
We have excused absences for three, and we have a quorum at 13.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews, and let's move on to the October 17, 2017, meeting agenda, and that will be the Vice Chair, Councilmember Sutherland.
You all have, you all, you all have the agendas in front of you, and immediately I need to make an addition to that. Is she here? Are you here, Mindy, yet? Okay. I forgot the library, I'm sorry, so make it Item 7.6, the library, and Mindy Kote will be here.
Okay.
Are there any other additions that need to be made to the agenda?
Is it possible to add a 6.3, just a couple of announcements from the Education Committee?
6.3.
Education Committee.
You got it.
Thank you.
Sylvia?
I'd like to add a census check report on 4613.
So, 8.3, 4613. Judy?
Okay, 7.6, 46 Assembly.
It'd be 7.7.
Forty, 7.7, yes.
Madam Chair?
41st.
Yes, ma'am.
There's no census track report for 4603.02.
Thank you, Gloria. If there's no other changes, then I move that we accept the agenda as amended. Second. Thank you.
Okay, the agenda that you have in front of you, adding, we added the 7.6, and which other one?
7.7.
7.7.
6.3?
And eight, well, 8.3, no, we removed the 8.2.
Okay. And 6.3.
All right. 6.3 is the Education Committee. Okay. All right, moving on, the Chair's Report. Actually, it's going to be a little bit for tonight. Community of Altadena, your town council is looking to doing things differently in four words: progressive ideas, community engagement. Some of the things planned will be new, and some will be reintroduction of previous programs. We are aware that not everyone will embrace the changes. However, our goal is to present progressive ideas and the positive engagement of the community in reaching a resolution. One of the many projects we are working on include Get Healthy Altadena 2018. Your Altadena Town Council and men educating men about health in conjunction with Congresswoman Judy Chu and many other sponsors, including USC, UCLA, Kaiser, City of Hope, and many more, will be providing free, and I say free, healthcare screenings such as ultrasounds for the heart, arteries, liver, kidneys, and many other screenings such as prostate, diabetes, cholesterol, hearing, and so forth. This will take place on Saturday, February 24, 2018, at the Altadena Senior Center. More information and updates will be provided as they become available. We are looking about 8:30 to about 4:30, but more information will be provided. If you have any questions concerning Get Healthy Altadena 2018 that is being supported by your Altadena Town Council, please direct your inquiry to me via the, my email, and it is okori dot ezma at altidinatowncouncil dot org. The other thing that we're looking at is that the Altadena Town Council will have a table at the Artisanal LA and the Altadena Library Second Saturday Block Party as part of our community outreach. I believe Councilmembers, Councilmember Matthews, who is leading this project, will have probably additional details later. She will notice Altadena, recently we moved public comments up as a result of the community input, which has been well received by the community. So we are very progressive, wanting to embrace and engage the community, allow some time. So that's some of the changes that we hope that will make us and make the community better, and we can serve the community better. We have also added a parliamentarian position for consistency and compliance to protocol. We've appointed the Education Committee, and a report will be presented to the community as well to ensure our schools are getting the right attention it deserves. We have the Community Relations Committee to lead our community engagement and collaboration efforts. We have the Bylaws Committee to review and revise our bylaws, and more committees contemplated and will be announced when constituted. If you have any ideas, please let your council representative know. We are seriously ready to engage our community, and we want you to participate because you elected us and we represent you. Your representatives are very active in the community. They are present at community events. I am not aware of any community event that we did not have a representative of the Altadena Town Council in attendance recently, lately. We encourage you to reach out to your council representatives. You can look them up on our, on our website if you know their first name, the last name. It will be the first name, dot the last name, at altidinatowncouncil dot org. And if, if you can, we doing the best that we can right now for our website, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Delatorre for, for updating the website. Now, it is also a plea to the community. If you can help to make it better, we definitely welcome your ideas, and to join us is a collaboration. This is your Altadena Town Council. So I don't believe I'm missing too many things, and that will be the conclusion of the Chair's Report. I would like to just use one of the Chair's privileges to yield to Councilmember Dr. Thomas. We're just glad to see you back here after the loss of end of family and bereavement, so if you have a statement to say, that'll be fine, and that'll conclude my report.
Good evening, to my Chair, to our officers, to my fellow council members, and to my community. I just want to say thank you. It's a small word, but it grows as it moves from heart to heart. I want to thank you for all of the condolences, well wishes, the cards, the love, for our wonderful Chair and some of the council members coming over for the services of my daughter. And I'd like to say that my, my family, we're doing pretty good. Our hearts are broken, but my faith is not shattered at all. So with that said, I want to thank you so much. Just keep happy thoughts for us. God bless you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the Vice Chairman's Report, Councilmember Sutherland.
I don't have a whole lot tonight, just to let you know that the Executive Committee met a week ago today on October the 10th to set the agenda for the meeting tonight. And there are comment cards sitting on the piano. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, and during the general comment time period, please complete one of the cards and just hand them out to council members at the either end of the table here, and they'll pass them on to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman. Recording Secretary, that will be Councilmember Matthews.
Okay. Just a second. Council, you were provided the draft of Altadena Town Council Meeting Minutes of September 19th, 2017, with a response date of Monday, September, I'm sorry, October 16th, 2017. Are there any comments? Not hearing none. I move that the draft Meeting Minutes of September 19th, 2017 be approved as presented.
You have heard the motion regarding the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, and that is the minutes for September 19, 2017. Treasurer's Report, that will be Councilmember White, and take it up.
The Altadena Town Council account stands in good standing. The balance is 2221. Please consider supporting the Town Council if you have an opportunity. Thank you.
Correspondent Secretaries Report, that will be Councilmember Delatorre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to remind all council members to make sure that your contact information is thoroughly updated, so as members of the community can contact you and you can, you can respond back in a timely manner. And again, that also goes to your bio, your picture, anything on the website that you would like to change, please refer that to me. And I'll again stress the importance of social media in this day and age, so I'd encourage you to use those platforms as well. As the Chair was mentioning about the website, I am still in the process of completing the website, which I'm almost done with the, hello? Okay, sorry, yeah. I'm almost done with what I call Phase 1, which is just the optimization of the current website, which afterwards we'll move on to Phase 2, which would be a complete revamp of the website, which will take some time, but I will be sure to present it before to the public and to the, to the Town Council for approval, and so we're all aware of the changes. One thing I am getting a lot of from Town Council members and people from the public is a lot of things are moving around within the website, which they're not, people aren't used to knowing where they are. They're used to knowing where they are, but now they, it's somewhere else. So I'll be sure to display a warning in the top with my contact information, but for future reference, if you do have any issues with the website, or you want to know why something looks different, feel free to contact me, and I'll be sure to explain whatever needs to be explained. That is all.
Thank you so much, Correspondent Secretary. Moving on to Public Safety Reports. Do we have the CHP in the house? Okay. Is that Officer Cooper?
Sure looks like it.
Oh, yeah.
How's everybody doing tonight? Good, good. So, a couple things. Last time I was here, I talked about that Tetcha Truck event at Santa Anita, and that went well. We landed our helicopter at Santa Anita Racetrack again, and a lot of kids there in attendance, and we had a lot of fun, so it was a good event. If you missed it this year, they'll do it again next year, so watch out for it. The new radar trailer I had mentioned, I don't know if everybody's gotten a chance to see it, but it's been moving around in the Altadena area right now. It's on Lake Avenue north of Altadena Drive, so we'll probably be moving it this week to another location. If you have any specific areas that you'd kind of like to see it, if you want to just call into the office and let Officer Uloah know, we can work on trying to work that onto our schedule to see if we can get it into those locations if you think it'll help. What else I got here? I don't know if anybody noticed, but at the end of last month, we did some pedestrian and targeted enforcement for crosswalks on Lake Avenue. So we had five, five motorcycles working the crosswalks on Lake Avenue alone one morning, and we'll continue to do that in certain locations throughout the area over the next year, and try and see what we can do about getting people to yield to the pedestrians in those crosswalks. I've got the stats for the month of September. We had a total of 28 traffic collisions. Of those, 23 were pretty damage only, and we had five that had some form of injury. We had zero that were DUI related, but there were two DUI arrests made. And that's all I've got, unless anybody's got questions for me.
Any questions for Officer Cooper? Okay, Councilmember Sutherland?
I was just wondering, now that you, you know, you did this pedestrian sting, what were the results, or what happened, or did you find?
Well, we definitely issued.
Anything you didn't expect to see?
No, it's kind of as we expected. I mean, a couple of those crosswalks are not at signals on Lake Avenue, and it's on the downhill side, so sometimes people aren't paying enough attention. So we did issue quite a few citations, and we'll continue to monitor them. We do on and off, but this particular instance, we just targeted it, it was an enforcement operation that hit it really hard, just to kind of make a presence note, get people's attention, so.
Councilmember Delatorre.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there, well, yeah, I think that last byline is exactly what I was looking for, the 28, the highlights. In an effort to give the community more information about what the public agencies are reporting to us, we, I'm starting to now post monthly updates about what each of the agencies are responding to.
Okay.
So I know that like before, like the fire has their own thing, but so I was just wondering if there is some type of report that you have already readily at hand that I can post on the website, or just something like that last byline you said, 28 collisions, X amount, whatever.
Yeah, and Officer Uloah, who normally works this area, he's got a spreadsheet that he works out each month that he can provide to you, and then you should be able to put that on your website. Officer Uloah? Officer Uloah will be back next month. He's actually out on a, he got called in on a special detail this evening, so he's been working that today.
Okay, Councilmember Wong?
Yes, thank you for the information, and I just want to know the five injuries, do you know what they were?
I don't know, they were, I don't know the specifics on the injuries, only that five of them had some form of injury.
I would be, would I contact Officer Uloah?
Yeah, or you, yeah, you can just, or you can shoot me an email as well, either one of us over at the office, and I can get back to you with the specifics on what those injuries were.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer. Oh, one more, Councilmember Malone?
Hi. I just wanted to check with you. I noticed a lot of your presence around the schools lately, and that's really good because, you know, the schools, as much as parents should be careful, they're hectic when they're running late. And I just want to say that I've seen a lot of presence and a lot of enforcement, and I think that's really good, so thank you.
Thank you. We're trying to get it under control as much as possible.
Is there a push going on right now, or is it just?
Sorry, what was that?
Have you increased anything, or am I just noticing something?
No, it's just the, it's just the same patrol. We rotate around the schools in the area, and sometimes we'll partner up because we have, as well as unincorporated Altadena, we have unincorporated Locker Center and Pasadena out of our office. So sometimes we'll target up and hit schools with more than one officer at a time, too, because it just makes it more effective, so.
I just noticed there's a lot of, and that was good, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Officer Cooper.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Moving on to the Altadena Sheriff's Station, that will be Lieutenant Octave, oh, the captain herself, Captain Stocky.
Good evening, Town Councilmembers. I just have one thing. I've got some new sergeants into my station, so I just want to introduce Sergeant Garrett to you. This is Sergeant Garrett, he just transferred into a station, so we have a new face, a new name, in case you call into the station. This is one of my new sergeants. It's going to be my goal, periodically introduce our new personnel to the Town Council. That was it. Any questions?
Welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just make a quick statement?
Yes.
The coffee with the captain went great, by the way.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And the reach to the community from you personally and your department, I mean, was, was well received.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So thank you for doing that.
I'd like to do one of Happy Hour.
So I, this is like my third one that I've done. So I did one a couple weeks ago from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, and so the next one we'll try and do in the evening. If anyone has an area that they would like for me to do it at, it doesn't necessarily have to be at a restaurant or a cafe, it could be at an office, but it needs to be a decent sized space where the public can just come in, and I'll provide the coffee or the punch, so just let me know. I try and do them about every four months or so. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Lieutenant Octave.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My report's going to be relatively short. I am, once again, pleased to announce that crime has decreased overall. We've had an overall decrease from September, from August to September, and it went from 47 to 43. The most noticeable decrease would be the residential burgs, which went from nine to three. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Wilkins?
This is, obviously, the fires are popping up around here, and I haven't been here when there was an evacuation. I'm wondering how does that work with the Sheriff's Department? Say, the Mount Wilson Fire just raced down the hill tonight. I don't think it is. How are the phone numbers updated, or who handles all of that stuff?
When that occurs, and it hasn't happened since, not in recent times, what we would do is we would form a unified command post, which would, which would entail fire, the Sheriff's Department, CHP, therefore, we would have all the, all the resources that are needed to handle the situation.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Malone?
I just got a question.
Yes, sir.
Has been a lot of, I've been getting a lot of calls and responses regarding parking violations, and especially there's some large vehicles being parked on Fair Oaks, and we have a large vehicle ordinance. What time of day is parking enforcement around, and how can they be reached quickly, and what information can I give a resident if they need it?
Whenever that happens, just call the desk directly, and unfortunately, I don't have the exact hours in front of me at this time, and I don't want to give you the wrong information, but we, the desk is fully aware of it, and I will also get in touch with you and give you the exact hours.
Okay, because the large, the large vehicles, they tend to come at night?
Okay.
And that's when there isn't anybody out there, and they park overnight, but it's, they're very large vehicles.
And we have someone at the desk 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, so call, and we'll make sure we get someone out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Octave. Now, we're moving on to the county fire, and that will be Ms. Wilkins.
Couple of things before I give the report, I just wanted to add on to what the sheriff said about the evacuations. With the fire department and the sheriffs as well, we do have access to a mass notification system through LA County. So at the command post, the, all the unified commanders, which would be fire and sheriff and law, they would identify an area that needs to be evacuated, and we would have the Sheriff's Emergency Operations Bureau downtown generate a message, and then it would call all the people. They can draw a little circle on a map and say, "Call everybody within this circle." So if you have a landline telephone, a regular old telephone, you're automatically in the system. But if you wanted to get those notifications on your cellphone or by email, you would have to go on to the Alert LA website and add those yourself, and you can do that at alert.lacounty.gov, G-O-V. So that's alert.lacounty.gov, and then you would enter your address there, and then it will let you put in, you have up to five points of contact, so your landline is already one. You can add a cellphone, email, and you can decide how you want to receive messages. You can receive them by text or by voice. There's all kinds of options, so that's another way. We try to do as much. We also work with the media to get the word out that way. We like redundancy, to try to get people out of the way. Having said that, your, your final option is, and it's one that the fire department is a huge proponent of, and it's called self-evacuation. If you find yourself wondering, "Should I go?", the answer is probably yes, and you don't have to wait for somebody to tell you so. So that, and then with that, I will also give you an update on the Mount Wilson Fire. It is a very, very slow-moving fire because of the terrain that it's in. It's in really hard-to-access terrain, but it's not really going anywhere. So it's been all day sitting between 30 and 35 acres. They have 10% containment on it. It's mostly camp crews and a dozer that are trying to work it to get a line around it, but they're, they're having a lot of difficulty getting that line around it because of the terrain that it's in. We do have four camp, four of our camp crews and a dozer assigned to it. We're in unified command with ANF, and we also have a strike team provided to the incident for the observatory and for the broadcast antennas, just to protect all the assets that are up there. There's no threat to them, but we want to make sure that it stays that way. With that, I will go into the September report. There were a total of 347 responses. 283 of those were for medical calls, and those are all outlined in the chart for you. 212 of those patients did get transported to hospitals. We had 212 of those patients did get transported to hospitals, we had seven service calls, 42 good intent calls, and then we did have seven fires. Interestingly enough, two of those fires were caused by bad extension cords. One of them was an improper use of an extension cord, it was just a regular extension cord being used to power a window air conditioning unit, so it wasn't heavy duty enough. So, that did not cause a fire, it just started to smoke a lot, and then they called the fire department, and we dealt with that. The other one was an extension cord that had gotten kind of buried underneath the dirt, under a wooden fence, so that became worn over time, and it caught the fence on fire. On Lake Avenue on September 17th, we had gotten multiple reports of a fire after people had heard fireworks go off. And we went out, and the firefighters did smell some smoke, they did smell some evidence of that, but they were never able to locate any fire, so there was just the smell of smoke. And then we had another smell of smoke in a backyard, and they found some smoldering ash on a cement block in that backyard, but there was no fire again. We had a cooking fire, and then two vehicle fires. We had quite a few power lines down, we had a gas leak on the 26th, we had faulty wiring at one residence, and then a flammable liquid spill, but it did not cause any damages. That is the extent of the report, unless there are any questions.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm going to try to say it right, Map?
You got it. Good evening, just a quick question, I've, I am in the northeast part of Altadena, my census tract, and there's been question regarding whether the community can support local fire in any way. I think that the community, one of the great things about living in a town like Altadena is everyone wants to come together to help. So, I had engaged with the sheriff's department earlier in the day, I got a message on my way over here that Station 11 was engaged in the fire, but is there anything the community can do, is there any need, water, food, supplies, you know how people want to?
I, you know, people, people are wonderful, and the generosity that happens is amazing, we are always amazed, and we're humbled by it. And quite frankly, when these incidents happen, we're overwhelmed with it, to the point where we don't know what to do with it. And we really, really appreciate it, but it's not necessary, it's really not necessary. Our firefighters are very well taken care of, they have all the food that they need, they have all the water that they can drink, they do have everything that they need, but we, we so, you know, you know what you can do for the firefighters? Just say thank you. They would really appreciate that.
And we say thank you to you, too.
Oh.
The information that you gave us was really excellent, in terms of the, how people can get noticed when there is an emergency. This is actually my first time hearing that. Councilmember, the Latour, is there a way to at least get the, the big information onto the website so that people, we can begin to engage the community, as to, you know, share with the community what to do, how to get in on that list, so that they can get allotted, to opt in, I guess that's what it is.
Yeah.
If you guys have anything, it would be nice to also have, so that we can post it or get it out to.
The, we just refer people to Alert LA, so that, that is what we encourage people to sign up with, Alert LA, and then to monitor the, the media, because we, we alert the media, we let them know exactly where we have ordered evacuations, whether they're voluntary or mandatory. We do let the media know, they put it out on social media, we put it out on social media, so we try to put the street closures, we're not, the fire department's not as good at the street closures, because we don't handle that, but I think the sheriffs are, are pretty good at posting street closures when they happen. So, yeah, that, Alert LA is, is the best bet.
Okay, there's a question from Councilmember Malone, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I was hearing somewhere that in the state of California, that we are so far overspent record amounts, this is the highest we've spent on fires so far.
I don't doubt that.
In California, now, and that, like, it's record above any other year. Does that affect us in any way? I know that we're talking county here, and we're talking about Altadena.
It doesn't affect the county.
We're not going to lose a scoop, or, we're not going to, it's not going, really affecting us.
No, it does not affect the county, we have a different budget, and quite frankly, you know, I mean, the, the state gets strained, but they also are not going to say, "No, you can't have resources", so they're going to find a way to make it happen, but they are stretched thin. And that, that's the bigger problem, it's not that they can't pay for it, it's that, if you look at what happened up north, with all the fires going at the same time, and it has happened down here as well, it's, who gets the resources, when you have so many fires going? And, you know, a few years ago, I can remember when I was working in Malibu, and then there was the, a fire out in Battalion Four in this area, and a fire in Malibu, and those helicopters were going back and forth, they were assigned to both incidents. So, it's just a matter of who's going to get the resources.
And hope there's no more fires.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, as usual, we appreciate you coming, we love your report.
Thank you.
Item 3.4, and that will be cert, do we have Deputy Dan Page? Okay, not here. Map your.
Eric is here.
No, that's, okay, Map Your Neighborhood, that'll be Eric Van Deverde.
Thank you very much, councilmembers, and good evening, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. As a reminder to the audience, Map Your Neighborhood is a disaster and emergency preparedness program. Our goal is to train 10% of the households in Altadena, that's about 15,000. To date, we have about 5.3% that we've covered, and that's 800 households, so yay for Altadena. I want to encourage everybody to get involved with Map Your Neighborhood, it's just a sense of well-being, you know, if there's an emergency or disaster. I'd also like to add that during the recent hurricanes and earthquakes, that we've had an uptick, we had 75 people sign up for our last facilitators training, and we have 168 people that are waiting for other facilitator trainings to, to come to, so we're very happy about that. We have one more community facilitator training this year, it's at Metropolitan Baptist Church, and that's on November 12th, and it's from 4:00 till 4:30, and these are free trainings to the public, so if you're interested, you can go online, and it's mynrsvp@gmail.com, that's mynrsvp@gmail.com. And Altadena Town and Country Cub is very gracious to host our monthly, well, actually every, every month, and in 2018, they'll be doing that same thing, starting in January, so we'll come out with a, a schedule of all those, those meetings. And then, also, we'd like to encourage churches, if there, you all have any church interest that would like to have us come and do trainings, we would love to come to your church and do our trainings. And then I'd just like to close by thanking Councilmember Matthews, she's set a fine example by hosting two trainings in her neighborhood, so, thank you very much, Judy. And that's all. Any questions?
Thank you so much, and it looks like you all might be able to get to your target within a year.
We're, we're very happy about that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so, spread the word.
We are. Okay, public safety and reports, I would like to, I know it's not on the agenda, but you all, please excuse me, let me use the chair's privilege, since we have been talking about the community, so I like the opportunity to give Mr. Elliot Gold an opportunity to share whatever he wants to share regarding Akona at this time.
Thank you very much, I'm Elliot Gold, from Akona, the Altadena Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. We have five meetings a year, and one of the things we ask is, do you bring the winning lottery number with you before it's drawn? If you could do that, maybe not. Anyway, we basically address the issues that you ask us about. There's a questionnaire that goes out after every meeting, we survey our members, asking them, what is it they want to talk about, and one of the issues that we're going to be addressing next time will be the issue of traffic at the schools. There are a lot of charter schools in Altadena and Pasadena now, and there's a lot of traffic building up before and after class, so we're going to be talking about that, and the Highway Patrol and the sheriffs will be there, and we'll probably have some of the schools present as well. We're also going to be talking about mapping your neighborhood, Jeff Sedlick has a map of all the neighborhood watches in Altadena and Pasadena, and we will be addressing that issue and talk about how to form your own, and Captain Stuckey will be there to talk about that issue. Thank you.
Thank you so.
The, the meeting is November 28th, if I remember correctly, it's the fourth Tuesday of every other month, it's after the Town Council has their meetings, the Tuesday after that.
Is it here, here?
The meeting is here, yes, yeah. At 7:00 to 8:30, we, we start promptly at 7:00, and we end at 8:30, period. Never go.
Would you mind just telling us what Akona stands for, please?
Akona stands for the Altadena Coalition of Neighborhood Associations.
Perfect, and thank you so much, and I know that it was last minute, we appreciate you giving the report.
Well, just, like I said, if you could just give me the winning lottery number before it's drawn, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, we are general public comment, and that, this is something that you all wanted us to do, and we really want to listen. Do we have any comment cards? Okay, so, none. All right, special presentations.
Twice as many next month.
Yes.
I have a question. If I, did I get that?
Yes, you are on the agenda.
Can I ask you a question? One of the things with public comment, it's hard to fill out a card if you don't know what they're going to say at any time. So, like, she doesn't, just, I'd like to know where, just from what experience, that could have been, because how do we know if he's right around the meeting? That's my public comment.
Thank you so much, I mean, it is very valid, what we want to do is listen, and if I may offer a recommendation or a suggestion, the, I know that the, the sheriff's station is very open, if you go to them and want that information, I believe that they will, they can give you that. So, what, the other thing I can suggest is, you can take it to your census tract rep and say, "I want this, want that", and, and hopefully, we can get you some information, specifically what you're asking for. All right? Okay, so, special presentation, this will be the Altadena Elementary School and the new educational offering. All right? And the principal is Ms., oh, is it Ms. Shekel? Okay, thanks.
Move.
My name is Benita Shekel, and I am the proud new principal at Altadena Elementary School, just down the street. This is Week 10, I feel like I've been there for five years, in a good way. It is a fantastic school, so I'm very pleased to be here with you tonight. We are changing the story of Altadena Elementary School. I don't have a lot of slides, but I wanted to share with you some of the big ideas at Altadena Elementary School. How many of you have been to the school? Seen it, been there? Excellent! Anybody attend that school? It's been there since 1903. So, one of the really exciting things that's happening at Altadena Elementary School that just started is our French Dual Language Immersion Program. We have found in Pasadena Unified School District that with declining enrollment, one of the things that makes our schools grow really fast is when you add a dual-language immersion program. So, we've seen that happen with San Rafael, if you remember, years ago, they were going to close it down because it was on a fault line, they added Spanish Dual Language, they're bursting at the seams. So, we are hoping that that will happen for us. Currently, we have about 250 students enrolled, we have a building that can hold 600 students, so my goal is to increase enrollment to 500 students before I leave that school. Yay! So, currently, right now, we have a K-1 combo class with 20 students in it, and there they are, they're super cute. One of the other exciting things about the dual-language program at Altadena Elementary is that we will never go wall-to-wall. When a campus goes wall-to-wall, it pushes out the community, and that is not my intention. So, when district personnel walks through our French Dual Language Program, they say, "Oh, my gosh, this is the most diverse dual-language program in PUSD", and I intend to keep it that way. Another proud feature of our school is the inclusion model. So, some people say, "Well, Ms. Shekel, aren't all schools inclusion?" No, not necessarily. Many schools have an SDC classroom, a special-day class, where students with special needs spend most, if not all, of the day. At Altadena Elementary School, it's a very important part of our school, that we use the inclusion model, so you will see students with all kinds of special needs that are included in the classroom. The other thing that makes this model work is that we have instructional aids in every single classroom, and they're not making photocopies, they are actually pulling small groups of children based on abilities, and they're working with students, and then the teacher's working with students, and then some students are assisting other students. So, we're seeing a lot less teacher talk, and a lot more student-centered learning, which is really exciting. And the arts, I am so excited about the arts. So, my background is the arts, I have a bachelor's in vocal performance, and in my young and charming days, I used to travel all over the United States as an opera singer, and I came in to become a music teacher in the district in Pasadena Unified in 2007, where I started teaching choir, and English, and drama at Blair. So, I'm really excited about the arts, because Altadena Elementary School just became a proud recipient of a $14.5 million grant. So, this is a five-year grant. So this is a five-year grant for three schools. So it's us, it's Washington Middle, and then it's Muir High School. Yay! I know. So what's really exciting about this opportunity is, again, when you make a school an arts magnet, we see less need to go to charter schools, and we bring our students back to our schools. So this money is going to allow us to offer some amazing programs and partnerships with Pasadena arts organizations, such as Lineage Dance. We're using a company called Education Through Music Los Angeles, the Armory Center. Students are going to have incredible arts-integrated experiences now at Altadena Elementary School. So you'll see on the left, that was recently, we did the Hakka, so we had some Polynesian dancers come in, and that's some of our teachers and our cute little boy, James. And then on the right is a company called Southland Sings that came in and did a production with our students. And this is my fabulous leadership team. This is my first time being a principal. So I know maybe to many of you, it doesn't seem all that maybe exciting or important, but this has been my dream for a really long time. So I take it really seriously. And one of the things that I do is study leadership theory. And so Abraham Lincoln is one of my favorite leaders in the world, and he made sure to surround himself with a diverse team of thinkers, people who didn't all think just like him. So these are the incredible leaders at Altadena Elementary School that were handpicked by the staff. So when I got there, I did a listening tour. I sat down with every single teacher, because they have been there a long time, one-on-one, and I asked them, tell me about the school. What's one thing you love, what's not working, and what else do you want me to know? And they named these incredible people. So Janetta Ellison used to run our learns program after school, and I said, no, I want you on my team during the day, so I hired her. Ms. Hannah Lee came from Field Elementary School. She's our instructional coach, making sure that we meet all the instructional needs of students. Mr. Randell Johnson was a friend of the superintendent's, and last year, when he heard that behaviors maybe weren't up to snuff, he sent Dell to our campus, and he's doing an incredible job as a behavior intervention specialist. And then Dr. Dana Hill has been in PUSD as long as I have, if not longer, and she is our RTI teacher. So she kind of oversees all of that behavior intervention that we're working on. And there they are. Look how cute they are. So I wanted you to see a visual of the students, and I wanted you to hear from me. The story at Altadena Elementary School is changing, and I hope that you will partner with me. As the chair, Mr. Izimi, said, I'm looking for ways for the community to be involved. We've connected with Montecidro, the retirement facility across the street. They're coming in. But any way that you want to partner with us, if you want to come read to kids, if you want to come be a mentor, if you want to come in and build something, paint something, anything that you want to bring to the school, I welcome you in, because we're here. We're here in the community. Thank you very much. Questions?
Tour.
Yes. So tours are listed on the back of the brochure with all the tour dates. They're once a month.
Any questions from the council?
Yes.
First of all, I just want to mention that I'm a new principal, but I don't know where you're from. Altadena, yourself?
Pasadena.
Either way, welcome to the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Very excited about it. Pat, PUSD's going through a lot of really positive changes, and I personally see that my daughters in PUSD, and it's a really exciting time. So welcome and thank you.
No, my pleasure. Thank you for having me. Yes.
Just define some terminology. I'm not familiar with wall-to-wall. What does that mean?
So wall-to-wall, some of our schools in Pasadena Unified have done that. And so that means they make the whole school dual-language immersion. So you don't have a choice as a parent. You bring your child, they're in dual-language immersion. So at Altadena, we're not doing that. You have a choice. You can be straight English track, or you can choose to do the dual language. When you do wall-to-wall, it pushes teachers out.
And a second question, why French?
That's a good question. So we offer Mandarin in the district already, and we offer Spanish. So French seemed like the next, the next language that we needed to offer.
I like to, I'm part of the Sidewalk Astronomers, and we go to a lot of elementary schools in Pasadena. I don't think we've done Altadena. So, yeah, we're going to bring a few telescopes, and the art of the heavens, we call it.
I love it. Thank you.
So, yeah, we'll definitely hook up with you, and kids love it, parents too, actually. So I'd love to let the kids see the beauties of the stars.
Does this now mean that Altadena Elementary is an arts magnet?
Yes. It is now an arts magnet.
So it's going to become part of its name?
Yes. We'll go through a whole series of rebranding now.
Of course.
Okay, council member Knapp?
I just wanted to thank you for coming. I've been so encouraged and excited about what's happening at Altadena Elementary School. I have a four-and-a-half-year-old who, through open enrollment, I hope will be going to the school next year. And I just wanted to congratulate you on both the grant and your new role. And thank you for bringing the enthusiasm and energy you have for our youngest citizens to Altadena Elementary School.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Well, we certainly appreciate you, and we look forward. This will be, this will not be the last time we want to see and join you in the progress as you are making progress.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, committee reports. We are moving, okay, land use. Do you want to talk about that? Okay, land use did not meet last, last, this month, so there is no report. And council member Marcusson, we wish you a quick recovery. Get well, so that next time you do the report. Femen Committee and Dr. Coleman?
Good evening. Good evening, council members and community members. The filming committee meets regularly once a month, and the committee is pleased to announce that Victoria Knapp has offered to join the committee, and so we welcome her. The next thing I'd like to say is the committee has finished working on its FAQ, and that FAQ have been sent out now to the people who are cited in the FAQ. And when the review is completed, we will be sending the FAQ to the council members, and we're hoping that it will help council members address complaints they receive from constituents, and they'll know who to call and what the rules are and what can be done. And we will also be submitting the FAQ for posting on the council website. That's about it. Any questions?
I know what you meant by the, when you said that the FAQs are being sent to the people cited, but I'm not sure that everyone here knows what you were talking about.
So the FAQ, I should have said, is frequently asked questions, and it's a summary, kind of in question-and-answer form, of things the committee has learned by speaking to representatives from Film LA, from the California Highway Patrol and the Sheriff's Department, from the Department of Public Works, and other, other people active in the, in filming, in location film, film professionals. And so, yeah, we've put it in a, it's about, I don't know, 15 pages long, it's questions and answers, so, and a table of contents at the beginning, so you could sort of look down the table of contents and see, you know, what the topics are, and if you have a complaint, you can, it'll direct you to which question and answer will help you with your complaint.
Did, did you want to address what will happen with those FAQs? I mean, how they should be all using them, because the, the committee itself will change a little bit as we move along.
Okay, so you may know that Pat is on the committee as well as Kenny.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so the idea, the goal is so that it won't be the filming committee who will be handling all the complaints from the community. We're hoping that the people, people in the community go to their census tract representatives, and, and then the census tract representatives may be able to help solve problems that arise as from location filming.
Will we have that, or that information on the website?
It'll be on the website, and you'll also have a copy. You'll have a PDF, too.
Just council members, when you want to speak, ask questions. They is being recorded, so please get to the mic. And council member Malone?
You just mentioned, once the FAQs are out, it's sent to the people cited?
The people C-I-T-E-D, the people who, like, we quote Arturo Pina from the, from Film LA as having said something. So we sent it to him to verify that we're not misquoting him.
Okay.
So that's, that's why it's been being sent out for review.
Of course. Sorry.
Okay, council member Knapp?
Can I just ask a general question regarding onsite points of contact? So when a film crew is parked, let's say, along a very long stretch of Altadena Drive that happens to be in, oh, I don't know, my census tract, and if they're not sort of, my question, I guess, is what is the first point of contact that someone should have with the crew if they notice that a vehicle is parked in a right-of-way, a vehicle is parked too far into the street? It was a real situation this week with one of their trucks being parked too far away from the curb, so traffic coming in that direction had to go into opposing traffic, and there was no one there directing traffic or anything. So what's the best sort of course in those situations?
The first point of contact is the location manager.
Okay.
Every film production, where most film production crews have a location manager who's there to interact with the community. And if they're, and if, if it's a small production and there's no location manager, you go to an assistant director or somebody, somebody with the company. But usually, there's a location manager. And if that doesn't work, if, if the, if there are filming vehicles parked in the right-of-way on public streets, there should be a law enforcement officer present as well, and you could go speak with him. Okay? And then if those two things don't work, you can call Film LA. They, they have someone, there's a telephone there that will, I haven't tried calling them at the, at the number they give, but they're, supposedly, they will answer 24/7 if there's a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We, Dr. Coleman, we continue to appreciate your work with Femen Altadena. I know that the great work that you did resulted in the county paying attention to Altadena and, and having taken it higher up, so we're still waiting to see what else they'll do with that. All right, so since there are no other questions, can you do me a favor?
Yes.
If I can get a copy in on the one that, that you signed, just the chair, before you get it to the rest of the council?
Sorry?
The FAQ that, that you just sent for approval, if I can get a copy before you distribute...
Sure, you can get a copy before we hear back from the, sure.
Yeah.
It might not be the final copy.
Sure, that's fine.
All right, good.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Education Committee, council member Malone, you'll be representing, reporting on behalf of council member Lee.
I just have a couple of quick announcements. As far as going in-depth with the committee is concerned, I'll leave that to the chair. A lot of exciting things are happening. We're, we're meeting once a month here at the community center. But anyway, I'll, I'll let the chair of the Education Committee give an update on that next month. But right now, there are two, are two events happening at PUSD in Altadena schools. One is Elliot. They're having a school fundraiser on November the 3rd and 4th at the Pizza of Venice. So if you go to the Pizza of Venice, take this flyer or mention this flyer for Elliot's Arts Magnet, and then a percentage of everything sold that day of everything you spend will go to Elliot's Arts Magnet. And that's on November the 3rd and 4th. So please go to Pizza of Venice, November the 3rd and 4th, if you want to support Elliot's Arts Magnet. Also, too, Elliot, they're also having their Fall Festival on Sunday, October the 29th, between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. I believe there's flyers on the piano if you want to pick that up. They have carnival games, face painting, cupcake walk, food, and a DJ. Take your kids. You can buy tickets for, while you're there for each event. That's, again, between 2:00 and 6:00 on Sunday, October the 29th, for festivals. So please support our PUSD schools, and that's Elliot Arts Magnet. So.
Any questions for council member Malone? Okay, moving on to the Altadena Community Reports, and the first one will be the LA County Department of Parks and Recs, and that'll be Melissa Hernandez.
Good evening, council members and community. My name's Melissa Hernandez. I am the district manager for LA County Parks and Recreation here in the Altadena area. Fun, 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 because I love Halloween. Fun, fun stuff to talk about. So we'll talk about the trunk-or-treat event happening on Halloween night, the 31st, at Farnsworth Park, from 5:00 to 7:30. So it's going to meet on the corner of Concha and Lake Avenue, where everybody opens their trunk, and they have candy, and the kids go around in the parking lot. So it's in a safe place to go trick-or-treating. So that'll be at Farnsworth on Halloween night.
Can you give the hours again?
Five to 7:30. Five to 7:30, Farnsworth Park on Halloween night. Then I have a spooky Halloween celebration with candy, games, contests, and prizes on Halloween night from 5:30 to 7:30 at Loma Alta Park. So I got something going on on each side of the city. So stop by Loma Alta or Farnsworth Park for their Halloween celebration. Then Charles White Park, I'm not forgetting about you, on Halloween night, October 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll have games, prizes, and contests at Charles White. Loma Alta, I have teen club. They meet every Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. It's a great, safe place for kids to get together, and the, and the group's really growing, so I'm super excited about it. They have a pool table, video games, air hockey, so it's just kind of like a teen room where kids can hang out and have fun. Then we have the girls volleyball clinics that happen, ages 10 to 14. That's on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 7:30, and that is $20 a month. So you meet every Wednesday for volleyball clinics. That's a good group. And then lastly, I have my, oh, no, not last, teen club. They're having a dance for Halloween. That'll be on Saturday, October 28th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at Loma Alta Park. Entry is free, and then there'll be concessions there. So we invite all of the teens to show up to our Halloween dance on October 28th, 7:00 to 10:00. Then last, I have, we're doing some movie nights, which are going to be really exciting. We're partnering up Chamber of Commerce and the Altadena Farmer's Market. We'll be doing a movie night on Wednesday, the 25th of this month, with Hotel Transylvania, which is a cartoon. And then on Wednesday, November 1st, the Ellos Muertos, we're going to do Book of Life, and that'll be at Loma Alta also. So those will start at sundown, so somewhere around 8:00 they'll start. So come out. We have all kinds of activities happening.
Much earlier than 8:00?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, the, yeah, so we'll probably be at 7:00, 7:30. Yeah.
Last year, when the PUC was doing it, it was to be done by 8:00, because of the little, little kids.
Oh, be done by...
And it actually got dark around, it actually got dark somewhere between 6:00 and 6:30.
Oh, because they told me at sundown. Okay.
Yeah, so that was what happened last year.
So it'll be going on during the farmer's market. So we invite you to come and shop and let the kids watch a movie.
Yeah. So I'm pretty sure that's, you know, because they wanted the little, little ones, they needed to get to bed in the midweek for the school night.
And it gets really, really dark down there.
Yeah.
So, okay, yes. So, yes, movie night will happen, 6:00, and we have farmer's market going on, so visit that, too, which is really, really nice if you haven't been there. It's one of the best. And that's all I got tonight.
Any questions from council for Ms. Hernandez?
Triangle Park is looking awesome. I can't wait for it to open. It's really looking, it's going to look so nice. I'm so excited for this community. Going to be a nice area.
Thank you so much. Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the chamber, and that will be you, council member Malone.
Okay, well, I was going to talk about the... Okay, well, I was gonna talk about the movie night. No, 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 that's good. I'll actually forward, I have a flyer for it as well. And I actually forwarded it to Nesta so they can put it on the website as well. And then it also went out last night in the Chamber Newsletter, just so you know. Okay. And I will give a shout out quickly for the Altadena Historic Society. They are a member of the Chamber as well. We've partnered for many years. They have a fundraiser coming on Thursday, October the 26th between 6:00 and 9:00 PM. Come have a beer with them. So I like beer, I don't know anyone else does, but come and have a beer. It's at the Mount Lo Brewing Company at 150 East St. Joseph Street, Arcadia. Flyers are in the back. Please pick one up. Please go support. The bottom left-hand sign shows you how, what a great event was last year. There's a picture of last year's event, right, Rob? And then the transportation to and from. No, these are historic pictures, obviously. But please check out the back. Please take the flyer. Please support. Shout out for that. Annual Dinner, an award ceremony for Citizens in Business of the Year. So just save the date. More details to come is gonna be Friday, February the 9th at the Altadena Country Club. Keep an eye open if you have any ideas with the, the applications will be going out very shortly for Citizen of the Year. Business of the Year is slightly different because they have to be, the business has to be a Chamber member and then it's selected through the Chamber. But Citizen of the Year is put out there so anyone can nominate, anyone within the community. So save that date. I also want to give you the biggest news for the Chamber is that it was brought to our attention a while ago that several people have been complaining that the logo had, was getting very old and it needed revamped into something more contemporary and traditional. It has no color. It was all black and white and everything was explained on there. So a process of about a year, going back and forth, working with a local graphics designer, Hugo Artago, who did all the design for it, with Sandra Thomas was involved. There was a bunch of people involved, went back and forth. The typical things at Altadena, everyone wanted mountains and so forth and so on. I'll show you, it's a very simplistic finished product and I'll just show you, this is the, the final product. It was unveiled at the last meeting last week for the, for the Chamber of Commerce. And you'll now see it everywhere. One of the reasons for simplicity, what, what was said was, is now it's sort of, even though it's very simplistic, it does show a lot of Altadena. You have them in the, in just the symbol itself, you have the mountains, the green of the deodors. It looks like a brush stroke, which represents the artistic community of Altadena because we're very, you know, with the open studios and we have huge, huge art presence within our community. So it says a lot with it being very, very simple. So, and the colors were also brown and the green, as I say, the green for the deodors and brown, which is indicative of the mountains. So that was unveiled last week and was about a year process and lobbying involved. So I just want to, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Malone. Any questions from council? Okay, moving on to the, do we have any representative from Southern California?
Collaborate Pasadena?
Oh, I missed it.
Yep. Collaborate Pasadena.
Yes, okay, it's right there. 7.3 Collaborate Pasadena, Councilmember Sanz.
The Collaborate Pasadena meeting was held at the Flint Ridge Retreat Center on September the 27th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. A discussion took place regarding the strategic goal alignment for the upcoming year. On September 18th, the Collaborate Pasadena had a community summit at the La Casita del Arroyo in Pasadena. A group of 80 community members convened around the theme of celebrating and bridging our communities. Participants shared best practices and ideas on topics including arts in neighborhoods, surveying your neighbors, being inclusive and communicating in the 21st century. And I wanted to be the one to give the good news. But at the meeting, Superintendent Brian McDonald reported good news. He stated that the Pasadena Unified School District had been awarded a $14.5 million Magnet School Assistance Program Grant from the US Department of Education to support programs that promote diversity and increase student achievement at three schools. Altadena Elementary School, Washington STEM Magnet School and John Muir High School. He told us that this was a five-year grant and that it was secured by the Pasadena Educational Foundation to support programs that draw diversity, that draw diverse students from throughout the community and expands public school choices for parents. There was a discussion regarding results-based accountability and then our meeting was adjourned at 7:30. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Thank you, for Councilmember Sanz. Thank you so much once again. And now, Southern California Edison, do we have Mr. David Ford? Okay, Maran.
He let me know late, late, late this afternoon that he was not going to be able to make it. One thing that he did, I know that you asked a question last month about, yeah, trees. So he sent me some information. If I can just share what he, what he sent. You were, he said, talking about tree clearance when they're doing, you know, tree, tree trimming. And you were asking for some specifics. And he said, this is, there is a state requirement and it is, it requires a minimum of four-foot clearance around power lines. Since the lines may sag from high temperatures and sway from the wind, SCE will prune trees to provide a clearance that accommodates for the sag and sway, saving the tree from repeated line clearance. So I'm sharing that with you and anybody else that wanted to know that information. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this has nothing to do with David Ford, but it has to do with Edison. I received my bill yesterday and there was a $32 credit.
There's a $32 credit on our bills this month. Because they have a program where they're charging, let me see if I can explain it. They're charging companies that have gone over the emission standards. So they, these companies pay to go over those emission standards in our air. And that money now is coming back to us on our bill. And I got $32. So I wanted everybody to look at their bills and see if they got that credit. I was surprised. I never got a credit on a. Yeah. You probably could explain better than me. So I called to find out why did I get a credit.
Thank you so much. Okay. Altadena Historic Society, and that will be? Mr. Hallwatt.
I'm Rob Hallwatt. I'm pleased to be a board member of the Altadena Historical Society, which I'm sure you all know is right across the courtyard here in the Community Center Building. And we've been here since the building was built. As a matter of fact, we've been in Altadena since 1935. So we are the community's oldest not-for-profit organization. What we have here in our space across the courtyard is kind of like Altadena's attic. And we have amazing supply of newspapers and oral histories and photographs and documents and letters that give a fascinating picture of this fascinating community. The reason I'm here tonight, and I want to thank Councilmember Sutherland for inviting us, is that we have a couple of very busy weeks ahead of us. And we have three big events that I wanted to share with you. On next Monday, the 23rd, in this room, beginning at 7:30, we'll have a program presented by Ronald Woolsey, who's a professor and biographer of a gentleman by the name of Will Thrall, who was called Southern California's John Muir. And he was a writer, a conservationist, an explorer, an amazing man of the San Gabriel Mountains around the late 1800s, early 1900s. The program is free and open to the public, as all our programs are. And that's at 7:30 this coming Monday. Two days later, or three days later, on Thursday, the 26th of the month, as Councilmember Malone was kind enough to tell you about, we're having a fundraiser at the Mount Lo Brewing Company in Arcadia. They have eight wonderful, fabulous, handcrafted beers. I can testify to that, having done a little bit of advanced work at the brewery myself. And we're going to have a great food truck there, Pellegrino's Italian Food. The brewery has kindly promised to give us 10% of the day's proceeds. Our event is from 6:00 to 9:00, but the brewery is open something like maybe from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So you can go early and stay late if you want, and it would all benefit us. We also have recently learned that Professor Thaddeus Low and his wife Leontine will be present, at least personified by Stephen Demery and his wife Patrice, who some of you may remember gave a program in this room several years ago, characterizing or personifying Professor Thaddeus Low and his wife. So they're coming in costume and will be greeting guests and circulating. I don't know if they'll be drinking, but at least they'll be chatting with our guests. And a week and a half after that, on November 4th, which is a Saturday, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM here in our archives and museum, we'll be launching our new exhibit, which will be up for a year. It's called Inspired by the San Gabriel's. Five, let me give you the proper title. Five men who were conservationists, explorers and promoted the San Gabriel's, hiked through them, blazed in the trails, named the mountains. And they are George Wharton James, who was a writer and a lecturer and a publicist for the Mount Lo Railway in the late 1890s. Theodore Lukens, who was known as the father of forestry. And here in the San Gabriel's, Will Thrall, who the program is about next Monday. Don McLean, who was a surveyor for the Forest Service. And LT Gachi, who was a documentary photographer. We're having a open house, free and open to the public from 2:00 to 4:00. Some of the descendants of these gentlemen will be present. And at the same time, we'll be launching our newest website, which will be our collection of Mount Lo documents and photographs. I hope you can come to all these programs and appreciate your support. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay, next one is the.
Actually, I have a quick question.
Rob?
Mr. Hallwatt.
Mr., I have a friend, an older lady who's looking to, she wants to volunteer. And she was asking about how can she volunteer with the Historical Society?
Here, easily, just why don't you introduce yourself?
And that's it?
We're open from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM Mondays, Tuesdays and Fridays. And, or she may email us her phone.
Okay.
We'd love to talk with her and find her and consult her. Now we can help her and she can help us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Altadena Library Mindy Kote.
Good evening, Town Council. I'm so happy to be here. Before I forget, I wanted to mention, if you are going to the farmers market for the movie or any other time, we now have story hour at every Wednesday, farmers market at 4:00. So if you have kiddos that might enjoy that, that would be great for them to go to. And the other thing I wanted to make sure, because there's a ton to talk about this time, is to say how pleased I am to see that there's gonna be a table for the Town Council at the block party on the second Saturday of November at the library. So that's really wonderful. We'll have lots of other nonprofits and informational booths there, as well as many, many other things that you can read about in the newsletter. So we just started up our second Saturday series again. And we had upstream, we had over 350 people at the library. It was fantastic. I hope you will grab a schedule and join us, at least for some of those in the future. Let's see, I too do community conversation coffee things. And, oh, she's gone already. I was gonna tell her she should do one at the library. But I'm actually gonna do mine outside of the library this year. So my next one is tomorrow night at the Ale House. So that's called Cocktails and Conversations. The library is not providing the cocktails, but we are providing the conversations. So if you know anyone who'd like to come and talk about their aspirations for Altadena and the library, I'll be there. And then Saturday, I'll be at the Sidewalk Cafe. And I believe the full schedule's online and probably in the newsletter as well. We received our fourth grant-funded 3D printer, which is now up in the fab lab. So I wanted to mention that. We also were so surprised and amazed that we received the Reader Recommended Award for Libraries from the Pasadena Weekly for the Best of Pasadena. So you'll see us talking about that a little bit more in the future. Well, it'll be on all of our marketing and everything. We had the Taste of Dina event. It's the first real fundraiser that we've put on, at least since I've been here, and, which is three years now. And we, our net revenue was $13,300. So thank you to all of, so many people came. I think we had about 175 people. It was an amazing evening. We absolutely are going to do it every year. And a huge thank you to the 50th Anniversary Committee who put the event on and the foundation, Altadena Library Foundation, who was the overarching entity for that. Coming up very soon, starting in November, we are going to have a, someone in the library on a regular basis, this is also in the newsletter and on our website, to help people individually in the small meeting room with signing up for Covered California. So we will be helping people determine their health insurance options, I believe, all of November, December and January. We will have appointments every single week. So that is pretty exciting. I, I don't think I mentioned this last time. For local neighborhood associations, the library's now offering free printing and marketing. So for Akona and other, the Map Your Neighborhood and all those different organizations that need help. and all those different organizations that need help spreading the word, they just need to send us the information. We'll put it in our eBlast. We'll put it on our community calendar. And we will also print flyers and things for them to use, to spread the word in their area. And trying to remember what else. I think, other than that, I just wanted to say that, as I've really enjoyed my three years here, and it has been an amazing experience helping to transform the library and learn about the community. And many of you, we've had individual conversations, and you've talked to me about your experiences at the library and what you're hearing from your community. And now is really your time to speak up, if you would like to. Next Monday is our board meeting at 5:00. And we, I invite you to come to that meeting and provide comment, and public comment, to the board about your thoughts about the library and how it's been going, and any other information you'd like to impart. And of course, you're welcome at any board meeting, but this is a pretty special one, because it's three years. So. Any questions? 5:00 is when the meeting starts, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay. Councilmember Knapp?
Thank you.
A question regarding the community calendar. How do people access it to put events? What's, can you give me a little bit of an idea of the framework? Because there was planting that occurred, mulching that occurred on Sunday at Triangle Park, even though I announced it, and I think it was announced on the Beautiful Altadena Facebook page, and even next door, it never made it onto the community calendar. And someone complained that we need this calendar. So how do you envision it being used, and how is it used?
So, right now, we are, through a volunteer, trying to populate it. But ultimately, it is the responsibility of every organization, school, church, 4H, yard sale, whatever you want to put in there, for those individuals to put it in there. It literally takes about 60 seconds. It's not moderated. So you just go to the library website, right on the front page, in a big block on the right-hand side, it says Community Calendar. You click it. And then there's a little link up on the right. It says Submit an Event. You fill in the blocks, hit Submit, it's up immediately. And then, as a user, you can go in, you can sign up for events, you can ask for it to be put added to your calendar, to get reminders. You can get weekly reminders of any events on the calendar. Every Sunday, I get an email automatically from the community calendar, shows me everything on there, and then it highlights all the new events that have been added.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Actually, this is for Victoria. I've actually done that for the Altadena Town Council, at least for the main web, the main meetings, these meetings. So I can actually walk you through that if you'd like to. And also, I guess I would go to any other event, if you guys have issues putting that into their website. I've already done it, so you can like forward that that way, and then I can help you with that as well.
With the community calendar, is there categories? Meaning, sometimes what happens is you'll have one group end up putting all their classes on, and it'll have 2:00, 3:00, 4:00. But when it's events and other things, too, so it's very hard to, if you have so many things on there and you're looking for specifics, you know, it's easy to navigate if there's categories and people can find things.
Yep. There are categories. It's very easy to search. And, you know, it's something we heard over and over again in the community conversations, that there is no one place for people to go and look to find out what's going on in Altadena. So the library's paying for it, and, and we're, we're trying to make it that place. So...
So use it.
Yeah. It'll probably take a couple of years, honestly, to get it to the point where it's like, I know when I moved to Altadena, everybody said to me, "Did you sign up for Monica Hubbard's newsletter?" So, you know, that was the first thing I did. And I read it religiously every Sunday. So for it to get to that point where it's the thing you hear about when you move to Altadena, it's going to take some time.
Do the local groups know that it's that easy to access?
Well, we're trying. We are trying to tell everyone, but it takes a lot of time and effort.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mindy. We appreciate what you do for Altadena.
Thank you very much.
Right. 7.7, that would be 41st Assembly. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. Altadena Homeless Count is January 23, 2018, 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. The deployment site will be in Altadena, and the Los Angeles County Parks and Recreation, which is one of the sponsors for the Altadena Count, will determine the venue location. The homeless count is a community-wide undertaking made possible only with the support of dedicated volunteers, partners, civic leaders, law enforcement, and elected officials. So it is a strong demonstration of our shared mission to end homelessness. And I ask everyone, please get involved when the information comes out. I've already have a list of seven sponsors that have confirmed, and the list is growing. But I will wait until next, our next meeting and announce who those individuals are. In regards to the further information on the community report under Hold, and I'm doing this under, under the 41st Assembly, is that on Sunday, October 15, I had an opportunity to attend. Ex-councilmember Ann Lancing was a panelist from No More Homeless Women in the City of Pasadena. Welcome to the Lunch of Compassion was outstanding event, benefiting friends, indeed, street outreach team. Ann has devoted her career to furthering housing opportunities for low-income persons. Veterans, there's a Veterans Day event at Two Strike Park in La Cucinta on November 11, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Another health report, very important, and I, I'm hoping I'm going to push this for next year, that Altadena Town Council gets involved, because the workshops are free. Anytime there is any type of involvement with Catherine Barker, I'm going to make sure that's brought to your attention under the 41st Assembly. The Southern California Women's Health, Beauty, and Empowerment Conference and Exposition is on November 3, 2017, at Pasadena Hilton. Time is from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. All of the workshops are free. The only cost would be $35, and that would be if you want to attend the luncheon. But the workshop, and it's important to hear this, the workshops are free. For the men, there's a Men's Cave Health Workshop there as well. That is free. I had an opportunity to speak last year at the Men's, because I spoke on health. So I was a rep. They were glad to see me. It was fun. But, but just, just so you know, this is free. Take the opportunity. Anytime we're dealing with health and issues like that, where there's no cost involved, please make sure you're there. You can go online, if you're interested, at www.thesoutherncaliforniahealthconference.org. Or you can call Lena Kennedy at 626-765-6206. That's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. Let's see. 8:46. Let's see how quickly we can move the rest of the things. Am I missing anything? I know we have the census tract report.
That's it.
Okay. Census tract reports. Let's do 460301. Okay. You want to do one?
Yes. I would.
There you go.
Yes. Hello. So I want to just talk about two things really quickly. So we, I have been attending the Altadena Crest Trail Restoration Working Group Steering Committee meetings. And they happen the second Tuesday, here in this building, in this room, 7:00. And just some highlighted issues we're talking about in our census tract is Lincoln Avenue Safety Roadside Route for equestrians from Loma Alta Park to Altadena Drive, and all the way east to the Hahamana Watershed Park, working on enhancing safety for trail users, as well as the Avison Charter School children on their daily group walks to and from Loma Alta Park, adjacent to the traffic on Lincoln. So there was a feasibility study done. It wasn't good news. The east side is too expensive to, without environmental review, to create walking. And there's a lot of encroachment from utilities and trees. So the county is working on either reclassifying the road and trying to gain more access for safe passage in that area. And the other one is an exciting plan called Shady Lane, connecting the Altadena Crest Trail along Loma Alta, under existing trees, and improving safety for trail and park users, including a crosswalk improvement at Sunset Ridge Road at Loma Alta. So there have been some comments, and there will be a plan that we'd like to present to the Town Council in the coming weeks, from Altadena Trails and LA County Trails. And also, the last part of that is assessing progress to restore full equestrian use and amenities to Loma Alta Equestrian Park Trailhead and staging area. So there's some discussion dialogue and work to remove some dead trees along Loma Alta Park Trailhead, and, and make it a little safer for trail access. So anyway, that's all in the works. If you want to find out more, Tuesdays, 7:00, the second Tuesday. The next meeting will be November the 14th, and you can learn more there. And just the last announcement, because our census tract is next to the Oro Seco, LA County Public Works has been actively planning for more sustainable Devil's Gate reservoir. There's three community meetings. There's one here in Altadena, Saturday, October 28, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 here in the community center. There's another meeting on the 25th in Highland Park, and one on Tuesday, the 24th. And you can find out all the information at devilsgateproject.com. That's LA County Public Works, looking for a sustainable program for the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm glad that you mentioned the Devil's Gate Reservoir update. It is my, one of the things I wanted to bring up before we adjourn. Let's look at Census Tract 4613. And I know...
There is a new restaurant in our census tract. The Baja Cali Tacos is currently a takeout restaurant located on the corner of Washington and Valencia. And while both Councilmember Marcusson and I have received a great deal of positive feedback regarding the restaurant, we have received a number of complaints from the surrounding neighbors regarding the parking congestion. Both Councilwoman Marcusson and I have visited the location and spoken with both the owner and the manager of the store, or the restaurant, I should say. And Councilwoman Marcusson has been in communication with Captain Stuckey regarding increasing the patrolling of the short-term parking right there to help ease the congestion. We will also be working with the county, and we'll give updates as things progress.
Thank you so much. I have some notes here, and I know that 4601 would like to share some information. It's actually one of the things that I have here. So I'd like to hear something about the Altadena Marketplace. I think that's what you wanted to talk about. Who is this from?
I passed you a note saying that to, maybe to remind people of a hearing coming up on the 25th. Whether you're for or against it, the hearing is on the 25th of the Marketplace. So I would, you know...
Okay. I thought it was coming from the Census Tract rep, so I guess that's why they were looking at me. Okay.
I just wanted to thought, maybe we should mention, because the next council meeting will be after the hearing.
Definitely, I agree with you, because it is on my note for us to mention that. Would you like to do that?
Go ahead. I already did.
Okay. All right. The Altadena Marketplace on October 25, the regional planning will be hearing about this. So the community is definitely invited to come and support or oppose. I believe this might be the last time that is going to be, this is the last time opportunity for anyone to share their, whatever the opinion is with respect to this. It was shifted or postponed the first time. I believe this will be the last time. So it will be at the Department of Regional Planning downtown, October 25. All right. And that should be it. The other thing that I have here, I'd like somebody to address, if possible, is you address the homeless. Oh, do you want to say something about the procedure for the Pledge of Allegiance? Were you able to distribute that?
I distributed to the...
The executive?
The executive committee. I'm waiting for feedback. Do you want me just, I'll just briefly say something? No? Yes?
Never mind. Let's, let's get to that. I thought it was already gone. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. I believe that's really all I have that was not on the agenda. So, having said that, okay, Councilmember De La Torre.
Oh, yeah. This goes to Dot about the Devil's Gate settlement removal. I already posted that on our Altadena Town Council website. So go to that website, go to our website. I know either MBBA or Beautiful Altadena, copy-paste it exactly what I put, so it's already out there.
Thank you so much. And I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. I think we are all done. Okay. So a motion to adjourn by Councilmember De La Torre, seconded by Councilmember Dr. Thomas. And the time is 8:54. So we beat the 9:00 o'clock time.